So I do want to let everybody know that Dr. McCormick is ill this morning and she's been advised by her doctor to stay home, and so we would wish her well and expect her back quickly, and hope she's back quickly, and so she apologizes that she's not able to attend. We'll go ahead and do roll call, please.
Dr. Burge?
Here.
Dr. Van Ness?
Here.
Dr. Freitas?
Here.
Mr. Hendry?
Yes.
Dr. Japan?
Here.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Dr. Tanner?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Weller?
Here.
President?
Can I say twice?
Yes.
Still here.
Yeah, still here.
All right, if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item of business is the approval of the agenda. We've had a request that discussion item A, the IPS Turnaround Academy update, be moved ahead in the agenda under best practices.
Just be right after.
To following best practices. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda approved. Second item of business is the approval of the minutes from the May 2017 business meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as written?
So moved.
Second?
If I may, I had contacted staff because I felt like the minutes didn't fully reflect the discussion, and I would, if with BJ's permission, move that these be pushed to next, the approval be pushed to next month so that we can have a fuller, and I've talked to Byron, who's our secretary as well, so I would move that we have the meeting minutes from the May meeting updated a little more fully for our consideration at our next monthly meeting.
Withdraw the motion.
So we'll move that to the July meeting? All right, then, board member comments and reports?
I'd just like to make the comment that since the last meeting, the 200 Next Generation Hoosier Educators Teacher Scholarships have been awarded, and so 200 students going into the teaching profession will be receiving significant scholarships towards their teacher education here in the state of Indiana. The purpose of this legislation, which was passed in 2016, was to ensure that some of our best and brightest would be highly motivated to enter the teaching profession and stay in the teaching profession. I'm excited about this program. I was involved in its implementation, and I think it's going to be very helpful for teachers or people who might not otherwise consider the teaching profession due to the high cost of higher education, as well as teacher salaries, which we all know are too low, to enter the teaching profession. So very excited about it. This is the first year, 200 students are going to be receiving this benefit for four years, so it's not just a one-time thing. So very excited about it. For those who are listening in or here, you can go to the Commission for Higher Education, find out more about the program. So it's a program that will be, there'll be 200 awardees every single year going forward, so applications will start later this fall. So find out more about it, go to the Commission for Higher Education website.
Other board comment? Moving on to public comment?
We have two general public comments and then some additional comments. They have a question, so they're going to get it. So more action, I would see. So just general comments now, starting with comments.
Good morning, board members, and we hope Dr. McCormick gets better soon. Appreciate your time this morning, and providing a handout here certainly won't read that to you, but maybe it kind of captures some things also that we have some concerns with. Speaking, I guess, right now on accountability and assessment, and I know those are items later, but sometimes it colors everything else that we discussed today, so wanted to break that up right now in general comments. We have our State ESA Plan moving forward. We appreciate all of those working groups, and we're on all of those items. A lot of these assessment and accountability items, too, we've had great discussions with DOE and State Board staff, and so appreciate all of that input and the chance to be a part of those discussions. Certainly will always be willing to continue those as well. But right now, here's what we're hearing from our members, so we wanted to start the conversation today. The topic for high school principals is the testing that will occur in the spring of '18. For that freshman class, and really that's now our current freshman class taking Algebra I, they'll take the I Step 10 test. That's what you approved at the May meeting, and we understand how that has to work. It's an imperfect transition that we're facing. The challenge with that temporary fix since the Algebra I end-of-course assessment won't be available until the spring of 2019 is that we're testing kids early, as that group of students would have been testing over I Step 10 in the spring of '19. Again, we've been programming for several years that those kids would continue and be testing against sophomores over I Step 10, yet now with 1003 putting in end-of-course assessments, we're going to test those kids a year early. That has principals very concerned over that change. A side issue is that DOE released guidance this week that the temporary fix only applies to freshmen who are taking Algebra I. So all of our middle school students who have completed Algebra I prior would now be taking a more rigorous math assessment that you will approve. Again, that's ESA language, and then, of course, that's likely the SAT or the ACT, of course, to be determined. True problems with that, we had no idea that that shift would occur for those Algebra I kids, so now they're facing a much more rigorous test for their accountability and their GQE or GQE pathway. And again, using ESA language to make that shift, and I realize you have the provision as State Board and rulemaking to make these policy decisions, ESA speaks to that when we would apply that middle school end-of-course assessment to the middle school accountability. Those students did not take an end-of-course assessment in eighth grade, they took I Step 8. So the temporary fix that we've got coming here has several challenges with it. We've tried to provide potential solutions or opportunities there. Certainly I don't mean to speak to what you should do, that is your decision. All freshmen in the spring of '18 could take I Step 10. And then if they fail that test, they could be eligible to take the end-of-course assessment in the spring of '19, because that test would now come online, and both tests would allow a student to complete a graduation pathway, and it could also serve as the accountability score for high schools as well. So one potential solution, something that we brainstorm with other high school principals, certainly willing to continue that discussion. The second issue is related to the testing sequence as well. Looking ahead to the spring of '19, when the Algebra I end-of-course assessment is available to Algebra I students, this then starts to use the logic of ESA. It says that a middle student's middle school end-of-course assessment score is applied to the middle school accountability grade. Sorry, lots of big words and phrases there. That student must take a more rigorous assessment in high school. We've been working to get more students into Algebra I in eighth grade, and for some, this exposure then provides them the chance to be more successful in ninth grade when they may repeat Algebra I. However, for some eighth graders who are good math students and are in Algebra I, they would now take the SAT, ACT, whatever you choose, for the graduation pathway and high school accountability. This may start to shift some students to the ninth grade for Algebra I, losing exposure to the content that really assists them. We would offer that eighth grade Algebra I students could take the ILEARN in eighth grade, delay that ECA to ninth grade. The middle school gets a consistent measure of growth from third to eighth grade. The high school has a consistent measure of proficiency. Everyone uses that end-of-course assessment, and most of all, students have the opportunity to learn the material that we've been working to have them complete. The next two items are maybe some future discussions, so briefly, we would like to think about multiple testing opportunities for students once they get to high school, as this was past practice when we had end-of-course assessments. We know that the testing and retesting and retesting is not always the best case. We're not suggesting that that be applied to every student, but if a student is close to passing an end-of-course assessment, and that is a graduation pathway for them, it would make sense that we allow them that opportunity. That's good for kids. Principals, we should also, at the same time, be thinking about what other pathway they might complete. But again, we've got 15 and 16 and maybe 14-year-old kids that we're working with here. Let's create opportunities for them and maybe not any potential roadblocks. And then the last issue is the biology end-of-course assessment. We know we have to do that per federal requirements, is to test in science. Biology is that one common science course, so that becomes that end-of-course assessment. Using those results as a part of that graduation pathway, again, something you get to decide, and/or for high school accountability, we don't see as maybe the right approach at this time. We've got so much going on in our testing world that if we're trying to promote STEM education, we see there are multiple ways to do that in a different manner than just applying another score to a graduation pathway or to a high school accountability. Certainly glad to work on those things, too. So appreciate you listening to a lot of details. Certainly you've got some things to read through. We're always available for questions, further discussion. Appreciate your time this morning very much.
Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Bass, if I could.
I just want, just a clarification. In the statement that having middle school students take a more rigorous assessment while in middle school would then encourage students then to perhaps delay taking Algebra I from taking in eighth grade to ninth grade, is that?
I think there's that potential.
Even if it's in the student's best interest to take Algebra I in eighth grade, we would then encourage them to take it ninth grade because of accountability rules?
So what we've been talking to our principals about, and I'm not encouraging that, these decisions need to be debated in the student's best interest.
I agree.
And so I think potentially, there's some percentage of eighth graders who maybe are better suited to taking it in ninth grade. Math is a maturity subject, call it at times. When I was a math teacher, I understand how that works. So there may be some small shift that's logical, especially when we're talking about that that end-of-course assessment is a part of their graduation pathway. And again, for those students, when we know from 1003, all the grad pathway options that were presented to you, scoring somewhere on an SAT test, or achieving AP results, or dual credit, all of those things that are up in the air, achieving a passing score in the end-of-course assessment may be their best pathway option, making sure they're eligible for diploma. That's a long answer to say, there could be those shifts made, and we don't want to see those shifts made for kids who are better suited, or having them take eighth grade Algebra I, and maybe they repeat it, maybe they get a low C. But then they retake it in high school, one, it certainly bolsters their transcript, but two, it deepens their knowledge of the content. So if we were able to delay that end-of-course assessment to the freshman year, then we would not have that worry over making that shift from eighth grade to ninth grade.
So you're concerned that if students take an end-of-course assessment in Algebra I after ninth grade, that they're more likely to be successful than they would be taking Algebra I in eighth grade and taking the end-of-course assessment? Do you see my question?
Maybe. You can see my puzzled look, sorry about that.
No, I just want to make sure I'm clear that, so students are taking Algebra I. Algebra I is Algebra I.
Correct.
Right? So students take it in eighth grade, they take the end-of-course assessment. You think that some students would be more successful than delaying Algebra I for a year, even if it's in their normal sequence, and that they would be more likely to be successful in end-of-course assessment after taking it in grade nine?
So I think that there's a small percentage for that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I appreciate this, and I think it's well laid out, and I think there's some things there. So my question would be, how do we, how do we look at this? I think this is something that we do need to take a look at. I know the proposed plan was well thought through as well, but now I think there are some things that need to be looked at, and I think it affords more due diligence than talking about it during a discussion item. So I guess I'd like some discussion on where could we go to look at this? How would we go about that? Cynthia, I'm seeing your hand go up there.
If I may, very quickly, yes, we've got a, Dr. Bass has identified a loophole, if you will, and some issues that need to be addressed by policy through the board members. I'm currently working on a memo that goes into the details as to why this came about and the pros and cons of different decisions that you guys could make, and I'm hoping to have that memo ready for the weekly update on Monday.
So I guess then to follow up, when will we, when should we have the opportunity to discuss that? And?
Some of these decisions will need to be made in order for rulemaking, because the accountability role, of course, rests with the board and the policy associated that impacts, this also impacts the graduation pathways. Of course, we're going to be discussing that and start meeting on that. And the accountability piece and the graduation pathways, they're kind of like this. They overlap, and when the discussion should occur, I'm not sure I have the right answer for that, but the starting piece will be this memo laying it out. Maybe it needs to be at the next board meeting, but yes, these decisions will need to be made because of the impact that they play on both pathways and the accountability role.
Do I understand, though, that there's kind of different, while they're hand in hand, there's potentially different timelines for those that were being completed?
The pathways, it's a big implication because it impacts the incoming freshman. All right, so some decisions need to be made because incoming freshmen, as again, as Dr. Bass was identifying, this loophole impacts them, and we need some decisions made. So schools, schools who've already set schedules, because it's June already and schools are getting out, but many high school students already have schedules for next year. Schools need to know how to hit the ground running once school starts. So the pathways, to me, is the first piece. Then the policies that go into the rulemaking. The rulemaking simply takes longer. So once the path, but we have to make the decisions for the rulemaking because it impacts, I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
We'll get more information later in the meeting, correct?
July work session. There we go.
So we will work on that during the July work session, not vote on something right then?
I mean, it's a public music support. Let's, maybe we'll send out the materials. I think we'll update the memo later. What I really have a question is, actually, I have a discussion.
I just don't want us to, I think this is important enough that I don't want us to have something where we, like, a lot of times we end up in a meeting and we're trying to get it done, and we're, and we're not maybe thinking through all different angles on it. I think it's really important to look, I mean, because you brought up some good points, Vince, as well. I think we need to give this due diligence.
BJ?
And I know it's an exception, but one thing we talked about, if I can go back to Vince's question, the students that take algebra as eighth graders, they're not going to, not all of them will take algebra, if they're successful, obviously, they won't take algebra again as a ninth grader, but you're saying they would take the ECA at the end of the ninth grade year?
We're saying that's a potential option.
Okay. So they could move on to Algebra II or geometry or whatever, and then, but they're not repeating the course itself?
Correct, unless they chose to, grade-wise or parent decision-wise, school policy-wise.
And the only other, and I know it's an exception to an exception, but I mean, something to think about when we go into this, is there are high, high-ability students that are sixth graders or seventh graders that are going to be taking this algebra class, and we need to, and again, I know it's, I hate to even bring it up because it's such the exception, but it's something we need to consider, because you're going to be two or three years removed from taking that ECA.
Correct, and I think there's potential to think about them in a different.
Absolutely. And those kids, again, those kids are going to be fine. I just want to make sure.
As well.
At least address.
And we have a little more time to get there.
I don't think we can.
For those kids.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we cannot bank scores, correct?
So we cannot bank scores for accountability any longer. That's why that provision now speaks to that.
You can't bank middle school scores for high school accountability. You can bank high school scores. Once they, I mean, for example, if we set the end year at grade 10 or grade 11 because of this SAT, ACT, whatever the higher, depending on where our accountability grade is, technically once the student starts testing in high school, the scores could be banked. The problem is, you cannot use a high school test given in middle school for high school accountability.
But you don't necessarily have to give the high school test in middle school. So you can't bank the scores, but you can bank the students.
Okay, yeah.
And so, I mean, really think about this, an AP, you don't have to take an AP course or take an AP exam. You can take an AP exam at any time. SAT, you can take it any time. ACT, you can take it any time. You know, why are we saying that you have to take an end-of-course assessment at a particular time? You know, so a student could take Algebra I in sixth grade, right? Take pre-calculus in ninth grade and then take an end-of-course exam in Algebra I. Correct?
And that's what I think, that's what part of proposing.
And that's what you're suggesting. I mean, I think whatever we do from a policy position, we should do nothing that would discourage students from delaying taking math at an appropriate time.
Absolutely.
Right? So any policy that would lead us to that kind of conclusion, I think, is bad policy. So anyway, I think we have a chance, and it sounds like the conversation that's something we can take on this summer as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that's what IASP is trying to point out to us.
Yes, that's a good point.
Is make sure you weigh all your options and make sure that there aren't any unintended outcomes, or do the best you can to make sure there aren't any unintended outcomes based upon some policy or some practice that we establish. But thanks for your comments.
Todd, a quick question.
Sir?
With your association, are these in priority order? Is there a priority order? Is there one that's more important or less important than others, or are all these equally important to students?
I think I ordered them almost in terms of urgency.
Urgency is a better term, thank you.
Just because of the timing of things, you know, the second issue around when we would administer that end-of-course assessment, as Dr. Burge was just saying, that's got that long-reaching impact for lots of years. Again, we're assuming now that S is in place, it'll stay in place for lots of years, and we're hopefully not going to be switching testing systems again. So that's, got that, you know, weight to it, and then the multiple testing options, you know, it just makes it, kind of goes hand in hand with when we administer that end-of-course assessment.
So timing is more of a reason to prioritize these or put them in urgency order?
Correct.
Rather than importance of whatever the item might be?
Although then, too, the decision around when that end-of-course assessment is administered certainly goes into our ESA, State ESA Plan, and certainly is a part of the RFP and how that assessment system rolls out, so almost 1A and 1B in some ways.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We had another public comment, is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair, committee members, John O'Neill at the Indiana State Teachers Association. And I do, before I begin, want to thank everyone who's worked on the ESSA teams. I'm honored to be part of one of those teams, and I think we're doing great work and looking forward to our state plan development here in the next few months. The reason I'm up here to speak today, though, is to, it's kind of deja vu, but to urge you to oppose the voucher waivers that have come to you today. And in the sake of time, I won't go into all the detail that I went into last month. I know we are all in Evansville, and we had a conversation about that, and I spoke to several of you on the side as well. And I would just say that, you know, we feel that this is not good policy to give schools a pass unless they've shown more than what's required by the new law. And it's so soon after, it's now two months, last meeting, it was one month after the General Assembly, and we just feel that it's, we need to reassess this, we need to kind of use discretion. You know, we want schools to be good for all kids, whether they're voucher schools, charter schools, community, public schools. We realize that we have voucher schools, that's been a debate, but, you know, we acknowledge that, but I believe that we need to slow down on this. And, you know, I said it last month, and I'll just say it again today, that I feel like I'm going to be here every month indefinitely saying the same thing, because we're going to see these waivers come up every board meeting. And I predicted that when the bill passed, and, you know, sure enough, here we are again today with the same thing. And I will say that we will be looking at an alternative solution legislatively next General Assembly. Obviously, that's quite a while away. You know, those efforts may or may not come to what we want, but I will say that we will be pursuing that. And I really don't need, I mean, you know what I'm going to say, you know, my arguments, I said it last month, and I don't want to take too much time, but I would just urge opposition to these waivers.
That's a question.
Sure.
Thank you for your comments, and I'm just curious, periodically, we have a number of schools that come before the State Board of Education asking for waivers on a wide range of things. I'm just, my curiosity is, is it your position that we should take the same position with all schools?
I.
Are you going to come before us and advocate for the avoidance of a waiver for all schools?
That's not our position. I mean, I guess, I guess what our, you know, and again, I don't, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I don't want to get too into it. I guess what we're, our belief is that, you know, the voucher schools, when this passed years ago, the argument was they could do it more efficiently, and they could do a better job, and that was what was sold to the Hoosier taxpayers. And now we've seen an explosion of dollars going from, diverted from our community schools to voucher schools that's coming out of the budget for our overall statewide funding. And the results haven't been great. I mean, honestly, I'll say that, you know, I have a background in research, regardless of what our position is, I, if you, I think if you look at the research, it shows that it hasn't been a great track record, and I want all schools to be accountable. You know, we don't want any of our Hoosier kids to be in failing schools, and it's unfortunate that some have to be, and that, you know, we have schools that aren't performing. And I think that we need to hold everyone accountable, but I think when it comes to this issue, you know, we're, and I, you know, and I got into a debate with legislators during the session about this, that they said, well, you know, so they get four years, we're talking about two years. I mean, we went back and forth, and I understand that, and I understand that schools, these schools have improved. You know, we're not, I'm not going to stand here and say that, oh, you know, there's no evidence of improvement or anything. I just feel that, you know, we're, it seems like we have a separate I just feel that, you know, it seems like we have a separate accountability system for voucher schools and for our community schools, because you know, however many years we're talking about, that's another debate, but if they fail, then either you as a board can take over the schools, or they can be put into different management, a lot of, all kinds of consequences. When it comes to the voucher schools, it's not about closure, it's about whether or not they can admit new students at more tax dollars. And so that's kind of the, you know, I mean, it's a complicated issue, but I think that that's really the the main part we have a problem with, is that we're getting into the point where we have a different sort of system, I think, for our different tiers of schools that we have, different like classifications. I hope, I know that was a long-winded answer, I bet.
You said we have two accountability systems, is it your position that that voucher schools are held to a lower standard than other schools?
I wouldn't say that we think they're held to a lower standard, I just think that they have, I mean, this waiver issue is, you know, kind of like a special case, I don't know, you know, if our community schools don't have this sort of option, really, I mean.
Because I know a number of traditional public schools that have come before this board asking for waivers and extensions and so forth, and I think most of those have been granted over time. So I'm just curious around the different accountability systems, how one may be held to a different standard than others.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, we would caution any waiver, whether it's for a voucher school, or a charter, or public school, or a community school, you know, just to use discretion when these decisions are made, because, I mean, we really are advocating just to have the best schools we can for all of our Hoosier kids. I mean, I, you know, like I said, we, you know, and it's more the legislature that we debate this with than with you in terms of vouchers, and, you know, our organization obviously opposes any expansion of vouchers. That's another story, that's another venue. But I, you know, if you take all that out of it, it's really just about having quality schools for all kids, and I think that once we get into this situation of waivers, you know, across the board, whatever we're talking about, it gets to a tricky situation where, you know, it kind of feels like we're just giving people a pass, and I just want to make sure that you know, discretion is made, and that the interest of all of our students is taken into consideration when those votes and decisions are made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, next item is best practices, and we'll have a presentation about Polish Pebbles Girls Mentoring Program.
Good morning. Just double checking my clicker, I believe the staff has some handouts to pass out for the board members. I just want to introduce myself, my name is Kelly Fair, I'm the founder of Polish Pebbles Girls Mentoring Program. We're a Chicago-based girls mentoring program with a growing national footprint. Grateful for the invitation this morning, we were recommended by State Senator Eddie Melton, one of your former fellow board members, to participate in the meeting this morning, so we're very grateful. The presentation items that you're getting are not necessarily germane to my quick presentation at the moment, so we can, you know, take a look at them later for your review. But I just want to speak a little bit about who we are as an organization, and I'll wait till everybody gets their handouts. Okay, all right, so Polish Pebbles, we're a girls mentoring program, and we focus on girls being great communicators at home, school, and the future workplace. I founded Polish Pebbles back in 2009 on the South Side of Chicago, starting off with two girls just at a one-time-a-month Saturday monthly program. Since that time, we've grown the program to serve well over 2,000 girls in the Chicagoland area, and we're also growing a bit out of state as well. So with that focus on communication, we mean, we want girls to be great communicators at home, school, in the future workplace, and we mean communication in every sense of the word. It means we want girls to know how to introduce themselves to new people for the first time. And in Polish Pebbles, we call that SHINE, it's an acronym, S H I N E, S is for smile, H is for hello, I is for introduce yourself and give three facts, and it's for nodding your head because it's polite in American culture, and E is for ending the conversation. For us, being a great communicator means that many of the girls that we serve may feel like, as most teenagers and kids do, they woke up on the wrong side of the bed, their mom got on their nerves this morning. But despite all that, it's us having a conversation and serving as the bridge to success, helping them understand despite all that, they can't come to school and go off on their peers, or their teachers, or their principals because they feel like it, or we know that many of the girls that we serve are facing high levels of trauma before they even hit the school doors. And in many of those cases, lack the communication skills, lack the resources, and the trust in relationships with adults to really know how to effectively handle them. So for the last eight years, we've partnered with a variety of different local businesses that I'll talk about in a second. Who do we serve with Polish Pebbles? Of those 2,000 girls, we've served mostly in Chicago, 80% African-American, and other 20% of Latina girls, and a majority, over 90%, are low-income students. Our program model includes a variety of school day programs, after-school programs, and the monthly Saturday program as well. And then I'll speak briefly in a moment, also about some of our out-of-state expansions, which is what kind of brings me here today. We've done a direct-service middle school site in Gary, Indiana, at Beveridge Elementary School. We've done a train-to-trainer model, where we train a school on how to implement their own Polish Pebbles model down in Dallas, Texas. And then we have a college level of our program at Duke University down in North Carolina. For us in Polish Pebbles, after eight years, and I've been in education for 17 years, I know that every, often when I walk down a hallway and I'm going to the principal's office or the dean's office, I don't see mostly boys in the office, I actually see more girls. But so much attention has been put on the plight of African-American boys growing up in inner cities, and rightfully so. But what's happened is what we call in Polish Pebbles is the other side of the crisis. There's girls growing up in those same neighborhoods, in those same homes, facing the same threats of violence in their communities, just as the boys do. And as a result, thank God, now the research is substantiating what we've already known as educators, is that the girls are actually being over-disciplined, are actually experiencing higher levels of being expelled from school, being oversuspended, and over-disciplined. For instance, now some of the research substantiates what we've already known, like a study that came out of Boston and New York. In Boston, New York, they found that black girls, in comparison to their white female counterparts, are 53 times more likely to be over-expelled. So, girls are definitely growing in their disciplinary issues, and it's showing up now, what we've known, and it's also showing up in the research. How do I know a girl's program is really intimately needed? And how do most of the women in this room know that a girl's program is needed? Is because most of us, as the research says, once we get to sixth grade, our self-esteem takes a nose dive. So the confident little girl that I was in third and fourth and fifth grade, and I loved school, and I loved to let people know how smart I was, and answered questions, and I was proud when I jumped to the fifth grade class, when I, in math, when I was in third grade, all took a nose dive once I got to sixth grade. You could not have paid me money to get up in front of an audience and get up and speak. And most of the women in this room can relate to that same dip in self-esteem in sixth grade. The difference and a game changer for me were different influences, like Essence magazine. As a young girl growing up in the 80s, Essence magazine, the magazine targeted towards African-American women. Every month, when that magazine hit my mail slot, I was the first one to grab it, because Essence women were beautiful, they were successful, they were family women, and they had careers. And so when I turned 13 and I was getting ready to go to my first year of high school, my mom said, what about day camp? I said, absolutely. I thought myself to be an Essence woman, so I should have a job for the summer. And at that time, I wanted to be a cosmetologist, my mom flipped through the Yellow Pages and found Deloitte Beauty College on 95th Street in the South Side. Ms. Clausen was the director then, Ms. Clausen is the director now. She took me on, two half-days a week, I got paid nothing, I had an ugly uniform, but I was happy to be in the mix. And it was in this work environment that I got mentored. It was in this work environment that I came and started developing my leadership skills, and I stopped being shy, and I became a good communicator. They helped me figure out what to wear, how to dress, how to speak, how to move, how to think, and think about college beyond cosmetology school. And I did that. Mentoring has changed my life, I've been lucky to continue that whole interest in careers and carried on, and had really strong female supervisors throughout high school and college who mentored me into success. So for me, starting Polish Pebbles eight years ago, I said, what do we do? We do what we know works. Mentoring in a career environment where kids are engaged, this is the United States of America, everyone here wants to be successful. And everybody, even little kids, get that it takes some level of employment to get there. So for the past eight years, we have partnered with local businesses like Bloomingdale's Department Store, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Microsoft. After 10 or 20 weeks of the Polish Pebbles curriculum in their schools or in their communities, as a culminating event, girls get to go to one of our partnering businesses and do a job shadow. They may follow around the VP of the region, or director of HR or PR at Bloomingdale's, or actually do Microsoft marketing presentations at the actual Microsoft store. Put in the communication skills, put in the life skills that we taught them into practice. Since that time, we've worked with over 100 program sites, we've been in 60-plus charter schools, public schools in Chicago, and also worked with girls living in public housing as well. In Polish Pebbles, we focus on three Cs, that communication, that career, and then we also focus on community, making sure that we weave in community members into every aspect of the program. And some of our program objectives include wanting girls to speak up in class, join groups and seek leadership positions in there, communicate effectively with peers and adults, and also do career exploration. What we're hoping, because the research is saying that the numbers of girls in out-of-school confinement and discipline are rising, we're hoping that that school-to-prison pipeline we often associate with black and brown boys, now that it's actually being associated with black girls and girls of color, with Polish Pebbles will become the school-to-career pipeline instead. So, we're working to have other milestones, like getting 40 girls internships this summer, through partnerships with the Chicago Public Schools and the Chicago Urban League. So you can see also partnerships are really strong for a small organization like ours. One time, if we're ever brought back for a further conversation and we can provide additional information, we could talk more about some of our impact stats. We work with well over 2,000 girls, we've done that with a network of 400-plus volunteers. On standardized assessments, girls have come out scoring 95% above on problem-solving techniques. 100% of our girls report that they have improved abilities in conflict resolution and anger management after finishing our program. 75% of our girls say, yeah, I joined the basketball team, yeah, I joined that group in my church or in my neighborhood, and guess what, Ms. Kelly, when I got there, I went out for a leadership position. 87% of our girls go out for VP, for president, or secretary. We're here today, if there's any opportunities for anybody to network with us, we also brought one of our partners from the University of Chicago. When we are talking about growing a program from 2 to 2,000, it takes partnerships to do that. The University of Chicago's Community Programs Accelerator and their Associate Director traveled with us from Chicago today, Shannon Moore. They helped us take our program to scale, and help us look at the structured curriculum and how we can best serve not only communities in Chicago, but communities throughout the nation. And so in Chicago, we've grown now, we are serving about 400 girls a school year in elementary, middle, and high schools, and about 20 schools this year in Chicago, and scale we continue to do. We're also building our capacity to measure our impact, right? And so we're looking at measuring different program objectives, like attendance rate at our sessions, increasing class participation in school, reduction in conflicts, and fights with peers and disciplinary infractions as well. Polish Pebbles has grown outside of Chicago, as I mentioned previously, we've worked and trained the school on how to implement their own girls program down in Dallas, Texas. We've been in Beveridge Elementary in Gary, which I'll speak about in a second, and then we've been mentoring girls of color at Duke University as well, who are undergraduate students, helping them with the same stuff, communication skills, finding a mentor, knowing what to dress, how to wear, how to put together the LinkedIn page. Our pilot program at Beveridge Elementary School, we've been there for a little bit over a year. You can see partnerships, and it's something that we were interested in doing with Gary from the get-go. You can see a picture of myself that actually got picked up, I might have met some of you guys indirectly last summer at the hearing that we had at Beveridge Elementary, as Polish Pebbles is a part of their school improvement plan. And these are some of the girls in Gary's Beveridge Elementary doing actual marketing presentations at Microsoft. Partnerships is what we do, when we found out we can partner with Beveridge Elementary, we wrote them into a national grant, that we were three national finalists, and got funded to do so. We've continued to work with Mayor Karen Freeman on a national grant through the Buffett Foundation, and also State Senator Eddie Melton, Purdue Northwest Indiana, and we've been at the DOAB meetings as well, finding out and making sure that we are invested partners that understand that community, its needs, and how we can best serve them. So, we'd like to talk further about if Polish Pebbles is a great solution for Northwest Indiana, and where and how, and how can we best support? When we talked to Principal Ramsey at Beveridge Elementary School, she mentioned that she saw Polish Pebbles as an opportunity for girls of color to overcome the stigma that they often see in media and in society. And they were so well-prepared for their trip and their marketing presentation at Microsoft. But then when we went over to Lake Ridge New Tech, and we talked to Calumet's New Tech's principal, Cynthia Trevino, where a school that has 30% African-American, 30% Latino, and 30% Caucasian, she also saw Polish Pebbles as an opportunity for a community of girls who live where there are no sidewalks. She said, what message does that send to young people about where can they go? And she sees Polish Pebbles as an opportunity for them to see some direction for their future. So, we've had some national publicity, so we bring that to the table in partnership through Revony Magazine, and mention from our Congresswoman Robyn Kelly on MSNBC. And then we published a book that we'd like to talk about at some point, too, that is a great tool and a professional development text for educators and people working in mentoring projects to help teachers develop new strategies for classroom management. Partners make the world go round. You can see from a program that started off in a free community room on the South Side of Chicago with two girls, that I knew both of those two girls at our first session, but since that time, we've grown and really put together a curriculum and opportunity to go further. And so what we're saying here is we'd like to see if there's more opportunities for us to grow in Gary, more opportunities to grow in Lake Ridge, or East Chicago, or South Bend, Indiana, if we're a good fit. And we're from Chicago, so we're not afraid of heavy lifting. We have more than our fair share of challenges, but, you know, each neighborhood in Chicago is distinctly different. Each school in Chicago is distinctly different. And we are very sensitive to making sure that we become partners, that we have the same values, and making sure that as partners, we understand the culture and the community, so we can best support that. Thank you.
Kelly, thank you for your presentation, the girls are very fortunate to have you in their lives. I think mentoring and internships are so important. A big part of our children's lives, and all of them benefit from having someone like you in their life and leading them, so thank you for doing that, providing that for so many.
Thank you.
All right, next then we have our change in our agenda, and so we've moved up our discussion item, and that is the IPS Turnaround Academy update.
Good morning, Wanda Legrand, Deputy Superintendent for Academics. I also bring greetings from Dr. Louis Farby, who's our superintendent, who was unable to join us this morning. We will share with you our update for this school year on John Marshall High School, which you all know will become a middle school next year, George Washington High School, Arlington High School. We will also give you an update on Kandesi Academy, which is one of our new innovation charter schools. When we get to Kandesi Academy, I will invite others to join me at the podium. As the presentation is being uploaded, you will notice for the high schools, we focus on three main areas. Those areas are the graduation rate, scholarship dollars, and also our goal to increase honors and AP participation in honors and AP courses within our high schools. So as I mentioned before, this presentation will be on those three high schools, as well as Kandesi Academy, one of our innovation charter schools. For Arlington High School, this slide shares with us their graduation rate. Arlington High School was moved back to IPS's Leadership and Support in 2015-16 school year, the graduation rate that year was 74.5. The goal for this current year, 16-17, is 77.5. Based on our prediction model that we use, Arlington is trending towards a graduation rate for this school year of 81.5. This slide shows the strategies that we've utilized thus far this year. Each of our high schools has a graduation coach, we have satellite programs like our Graduation Academy to assist students, and Arlington has a Twilight Program, which is in the evenings to allow additional support for students. There are student progress monitoring on their success towards graduation, there are student mentors, and also parent meetings to keep mentors, and also parent meetings to keep them informed in the process. Our next steps will be to continue those strategies, but also to be proactive with our support. So as Arlington was, we started our work with Arlington, started having conversations with underclassmen, so that work is being proactive. Having a freshman academy next year to make sure our freshmen off to an amazing start, and also institute advisory programs for all students next year at Arlington. In terms of honors and AP course participation, as I've shared often, there are 10 high school goals for each of our high schools, and one is around honors and AP participation. We believe that having rigorous courses for students is important for setting the culture and climate for their success, and so there are goals around honors and AP course participation, and we support schools and teachers around that work. For Arlington, you'll see on the chart there the number of, the percentage of students who are in honors courses from 15-16, 16-17, and also I've shared with you their goal for 17-18. And then for the AP courses, the same information is shared, the percent of students that participated in AP courses, and then also the goal for AP courses for this coming school year. In order to achieve those goals, these are the strategies that we use. There are, of course, teacher professional development, sponsored by the College Board, but we also provide in-house professional development once teachers are trained by the College Board. We provide formal and informal assessments that the teachers create themselves, their AP review and boot camps held by teachers across the district, and AP parent nights so parents are, of course, informed along the way. Our next steps for the AP at Arlington is to continue to use what's called AP Potential. Thanks to the state of Indiana, we're able to give the PSAT, and the PSAT is aligned to AP Potential. You can just insert a course, and it will show you which students would be successful in those AP classes. So we'll continue to use the College Board's AP Potential. We will increase the number of honors courses so students are prepared for AP. And then AP Strategy Professional Development by teachers who've been experts in the area and experienced teachers, sharing that with the novice AP teachers, and also continued parent education about AP and its importance. The third indicator for us on high school success is the scholarship dollars. I think we've shared before that in IPS, we have three goals. Our three goals for our graduates are to be employed with a livable wage, enlisted into the military if they choose, or enrolled into a two- or four-year school. Those are our three goals for all of our high schools. And this shows our scholarship dollars. We know that our district is high poverty, and our students will need assistance for graduation, after graduation, to go to college, and so our schools work diligently for scholarships for those who want to go to a two- or four-year college. On this slide shows the data for 15-16 for scholarships at Arlington High School, also the goal for this year, and then also how we're trending for this year in terms of scholarships at Arlington. Strategies utilized dual credit and advanced placement. That makes you look very attractive to givers of scholarships. Have an advisory, preparing students to apply for scholarships during that advisory time. Targeted senior meetings about scholarships, and also having specific scholarship events, events for our seniors specifically, just to get information and also to fill out those scholarships, because we know that can be very time-consuming sometimes. For next year, our next steps for Arlington and AP, having additional dual credit and AP courses, that, of course, helps with scholarships. There are specific pathways for students to explore, targeted advisory programs, and also exposure for students in grades nine through 11. So we mentioned a little bit about being proactive, and we don't want seniors to think about scholarships just their senior year. If you start discussing scholarships early, less stress for seniors when they get to that crunch time, and so Arlington is being proactive in having those conversations about scholarships as early as ninth grade. So for George Washington, we share with you similar data. The graduation rate from 14-15, then 15-16, the goal for this year, and right now where they're trending. So for us, you'll see that they're, unlike Arlington, they're not trending to be higher than their goal or even meeting their goal. So for us and our team, it's focused attention on why that's true. Graduation occurs for us tomorrow, but we know that we have throughout the summer in order to get those students to graduate as well. So we start summer school actually on June 12th. We start summer school for seniors and all students, June 12th for those seniors. And what we've done in the past three years is to have a summer graduation. We know it's hard for students if they don't make it for us tomorrow night, but we've made the summer graduation even more exciting, we hope, than the June 8th. It's easy for June 8th to be exciting, because everyone's graduating, but we have a summer graduation in September that we work really hard to make exciting for students, and it's been very successful for the past three years. And so for those students at George Washington who might not make it tomorrow, we've already had those conversations and gotten them excited about joining us on Monday, June 12th. Just hold on a few more months. We believe in you. You can get it done. And then the strategies used at George Washington High School by the Principal Emily Butler. They are on a block schedule, which helps with students obtaining credits. They also have a graduation coach. They currently have advisory programs at George Washington. They also utilize our satellite program, which is one, our Graduation Academy is one. She also has Twilight Programs, which are in the evening times. We progress monitor the student's success, and then there are targeted parent meetings so they're always informed. For next year, she plans to keep the same things that are going on, and as you can see, we're talking about underclassmen. We want to make sure that our underclassmen are well-informed about the high school experience. And then she mentions grant funding. Her Twilight Programs are funded by grants that she uses for after-school and weekend experiences for her seniors. The honors and AP participation, the honors courses, we're in 17% for 15-16, and you'll see the data for 16-17, also the goal for 17-18. And then for AP, same information is provided for George Washington. What we do, you will see in the honors and AP, most of our high schools are very small, so you see the same strategies. And those strategies are typically done district-wide. This year, they're facilitated by our High Ability Coordinator. Candace does a great job of bringing all the AP teachers together for their professional development. We might have only one AP Calculus teacher at one school, and so when we get all seven of them together, we perform, we create our professional learning community within the district. So you will see similar strategies, because we typically do all our AP Professional Development honors as a district because of the small numbers at our high schools. So teacher professional development, the formal and informal assessments. College tutors also support teachers and students at George Washington. She has AP review sessions and also AP parent nights. Going forward, same things that you saw at Arlington with using AP Potential, which is an amazing tool. What's different here is that she at George Washington has a school-wide writing initiative. So writing for many of the AP exams is really important, so she created a writing initiative for her school, and she will continue that next year as well. Scholarship dollars for George Washington from the past 14-15 and 15-16, you'll see her goal for this year. She's trending to surpass her goal, as of our last check, which was last week. Her strategies, the strategies that are used at George Washington around scholarships, most of them are similar to the ones you see before, except we have to throw in that accolade at the bottom. She was recognized, or George Washington, as an Indiana Top 100 Fast For School. For us, our goal is 100% fast for completion. We've talked about it this year. That will be a goal that we'll have for next year for all of our high schools and going beyond. We've had conversations with other urban districts about how do you get 100%? How do you get close to 100%? And that will be our goal going forward. But we wanted to recognize George Washington for being one of the top schools in Indiana with fast for. Then her next step is having additional dual credit opportunities, and then differentiated advisory for underclassmen, which is our theme, breaking down the information earlier so students have a solid foundation going forward, beginning in ninth grade. John Marshall High School's data is up next. As you know, John Marshall High School, this is the last year of John Marshall High School. Beginning next year, it will be John Marshall Middle School. On this slide, you will see the graduation rate. In 14-15, you see that it dipped in 15-16. The goal for this year is 70%. As we see below, it's not, they're not tracking to meet their graduation goal. Our strategies there are the same as with George Washington, who's a little bit away, even John Marshall's further away from their goal, is having conversations with students about being motivated. So your school won't be a high school next year, but you are a senior now. We want you to be successful after high school. We want to make sure that you start summer school with us, and you have another shot for an amazing event. And whether you finish tomorrow, if you finish the end of June, you still have that diploma. So that's our motivational tactics and other strategies to get our students there, of course involving the parents.
If I may?
Sure.
Is that predicted graduation rate for May? Or is that, are you including the summer graduations?
So that's our predicted for tomorrow, actually, June the 8th. And so for us, we track it throughout the year, beginning in the very first month of school, based on where students are and what they need to graduate. And so for us, we have cut points with the graduation time. How many students will actually graduate tomorrow in our ceremony, and then how many will graduate in the summer as we make our predictions?
So what would you say if you were to predict the graduation rate if you include the summer graduations? Does it increase?
Yes, does increase.
Can you give me a ballpark?
I can send you the numbers, actually. I'll be able to send those to you. They typically increase for us.
15%? 20%?
Depends on the size of the school. John Marshall's population is very small, so theirs could increase between 10% to 20% because their cohort is such a smaller cohort. But going to a school, George Washington, Arlington, a little bit bigger than John Marshall's cohort, be less of a percentage. What we have seen is that when we have been tracking graduation throughout the years is that we see a pretty, we can predict with pretty certainty, unless students decide not to believe all the motivation we provide to come on Monday and join us, that we can predict what will happen at the end of June. So it typically does increase between, I think, 10% to 20% based on the size of the school. Does that help? Yes, sir.
I have a question, actually, to follow up with Gordon, because I think he's onto something that I think is really important here. And that is, these are graduation rates based on the state definition of graduation rate.
Yes.
And I'm really interested in what happens to students outside of that definition? So how many students graduate at some point, even if it's a year later, or another semester? They need more time, right? And are those students earning high school diplomas? Or what's happening to them after they're outside of the definition of a high school graduate?
It's a great question. So it's easier for, it's difficult to motivate them beyond that fourth year, and so we track the fifth-year graduates. So if you, can I give another question?
No. I can't think of anything more motivating than having a high quality of life, and having a career, and a job, and earning money. And the path for these children who aren't earning a high school diploma, it's a lifetime of dead end. And I can't think of anything more motivating. So what can we do to ensure that we motivate them, that we keep them engaged with us, even if they need more time?
True. So go back to the answer to the question. We track that second, the first semester graduate who might come and just finish in December for our block schools, and they count as our fifth-year cohort. What happens in urban schools is that as students get older, typically, and I describe it with signs for kids, is that school is pretty large and life is small. But for urban kids, sometimes when they're trying to make ends meet, school becomes smaller and life is pretty big for them. And so for a lot of our kids, the majority of our kids do work, and we want to motivate them that if you persevere with us and you get a diploma, that job will be much better than the one you have right now.
Is that a condition of urban education, or is it a condition of poverty?
So the majority of students in most urban schools are high-poverty schools. So for us, we are high-poverty and urban. So I'm speaking specifically for the school systems that I've worked in, that I've studied that are high-poverty and urban at the same time.
Poverty becomes a dominating factor in that.
It does become a dominating factor. I recently spoke to the Vows and Salves and shared with them that all through high school, myself, I worked at Burger King. So I got very used to wanting fries with that, saying that to everyone, but it was necessary for me to work. It was necessary for me to work to have anything that I wanted to have, and also to support my family with my mother. So the same thing is true for many of our kids.
And where, as these, as John Marshall becomes a middle school, and these students then, you know, would continue on in through the next semester and continuing on, hopefully to graduate, where are they getting services from, and where will they be transitioning to? Because that's a hard, it's already a hard situation to be in, that you didn't graduate in four years, and now, in essence, your high school is gone.
So for this year, we start the transition with John Marshall and Arlington, really in the fall, starting in January, because we knew the schools were switching. Middle school's going down, high school's going up. So the principal at Arlington-Stanlaw has already formed that relationship, but the students and the principals at John Marshall, Angela Benman, they want to keep their kids this summer. So the students that are seniors this summer will participate in the supports at John Marshall High School. They really want to be there. The staff members want to be there for them, and the students want to be there as well. Great questions. So at John Marshall, we utilize some of the same programs with the Graduation Coach, the Twilight School, student progress monitoring, and parent meetings. And then the data around honors and AP, where they've trended, no goals for next year because they will be a middle school. And then the strategies utilized are similar for honors and AP. And then for the scholarship dollars, for 14-15, 15-16, 16-17, and their projected right now is a little bit below what the goal is for this year. We still hope that things will come through and that some letters of acceptance in scholarship money will come in for our seniors so they can meet their goals. The strategies that they've used, advisory, targeted senior meetings, and scholarship events, which you saw similar in other schools. We will be glad to share with you our summer graduation information so that you can have the data. We can share with you how we've trended over the past few years, and also share with you once we have our summer graduation, what those schools have accomplished during that time. Any other questions about those three high schools before we move to an elementary school? So Kandesi Academy at Joyce Kilmer is one of our innovation charter schools. Alicia Johnson is our Innovation Officer, and she'll introduce and explain a little bit about the program and innovation charters of law.
I serve as the Innovation Officer for Indianapolis Public Schools, and we have engaged in a partnership with Kandesi Academy, which is one of the schools managed by the Neighborhood Charter Network. The Executive Director, Kevin Kubaki, will come up shortly to give the presentation. For a little historical context, Kandesi, Joyce Kilmer School 69 was one of our most sort of consistently underperforming schools in the district. And so during the 2015-16 school year, we made a recommendation to our board for the school to be restarted, leveraging the Innovation Network Schools legislation that the state allows for us to use. And so this is their first year of operation at Joyce Kilmer School 69, and Kevin will come up and share with you some of the data that we've seen thus far. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Alicia. Good morning, board members. As Alicia said, my name is Kevin Kubaki, the Executive Director of the Neighborhood Charter Network, who manages Kandesi Academy at Joyce Kilmer. Thank you very much for this time this morning to talk a little bit about the exciting things that are happening this year. So we really rooted this work, this restart work, in the research done by Dr. Roland Fryer, a Harvard economist, who did a study on what are the characteristics that lead to success in schools, regardless of whether it's traditional public schools, charter schools. He's able to replicate success using these tactics. They're not rocket science, but the first one being, if your children are behind, you need to spend more time in school. You have two options. You could spend more time in school, or you could ask the other students to slow down. We opted for spending more time in school. So we have a longer school day, longer school year, which accounts for over 300 additional hours or at-bats for our children in order to catch up. The second one is high expectations. Obviously, as a school, we want to have high expectations academically, but we also approach it with high expectations culturally within the school culture. And so one of the key benefits that we implemented early on was the Leader in Me program, where we really addressed this idea of, if we're going to restart a school that had been perpetually failing for years, we're all going to have to be leaders, and we're all going to have to take leadership in the school. And so the students really were ingrained with this idea that they had to become leaders to help us restart the school. The third one is small group learning. It could be tutoring, or it could be part of what is in our model, a blended learning model, which implements highly personalized differentiated instruction in small groups for children. The fourth one is data-driven instruction, which is another component of our model. Our students spend about a third of any learning block on adaptive software, and I know it gets jargon-y here, but essentially what happens is students are learning at their level in a way that's rigor enough, rigorous enough to move them up quickly, and it gives real-time data to the teachers to make those decisions. And then the final one is teacher feedback. And so we launched this year implementing the TAP model for teacher evaluation. It provides for the space for weekly professional development and ongoing observation and feedback cycles that are really crucial to getting the teachers implementing best practices. So from the start of the year, we began the year with about 329 students, which is about where they ended the previous school year. Over the course of the year, though, we have added significantly more students to the school. So at mid-year, we had 385. We are still in school. We are still in school, so we haven't wrapped up all of our data yet. But at mid-year, we had 385. We're currently closer to 400.
Of those 329 students that started the year, how many are there now?
I don't have that data offhand.
I'd like to see that mix. And just as you're getting that information, I'd like, just to follow up, as you talked about increasing the length of the school day, school year, increasing time. I'm interested in how that affected students' and families' decisions about the school. Was that an opt-in opportunity for people because they saw increased opportunity and things happening in the school? Did you lose students as a result of that? What is that overall mix? And I don't expect the answer, but I would like, I'm just curious about...
Sure.
How students' families viewed those opportunities.
Sure, and that's a great question. We did a lot of work on the front end to educate families on what was going to be different, what was going to be new at the school. And so to see the 329 students early on, which is about matched the student population, and it was about 90% of returning students. So the families seemed to buy in. And then, as you can see, we've actually added quite a few students over the course of the year. So, you know, I don't have a definitive answer that one way or the other without our kind of final survey data for parents, but it trends in a way that parents were buying in.
Sure, looks good. So thank you.
Yep. And so we set goals for our year. The I-Step performance from the previous year, as you can see, 28.2% in the LA and 20.3% in math. So we set goals to increase those by roughly 10% in year one of a restart school, and then with I-Read, to increase that to get up to about 64%. Our internal goal is, we want to see students grow about 1.6 years every year until they are on grade level. So we use American Reading Company that has a very kind of explicit system of tracking data and creating feedback for students. And so I really like their assessment. Some of the data we use, the formative assessments, the NWEAs and things like that, give us good snapshots, but when we look at the full video of how a student did, if we're constantly inputting the data more on a daily, weekly basis, it gives us a really good view. And so when we look at where we tested our students using the independent reading level assessment through American Reading Company, at the beginning of the year, our diagnostic data shows an interesting trend. Our early grades started with us about a year behind. And as that progresses down to sixth grade, it gets to about three years behind grade level. So we had our work cut out for us. By mid-year, you can see the growth for the mid-year. And so what we are looking for is significantly growing those students and trying to meet that 1.6-year growth. Now, I will qualify this a little bit in saying that semester one in a restart is going to be a much more challenging semester than semester two in a restart, because we're spending a lot of time on systems, routines, procedures, shifting the culture, which we did. We saw 70% decrease in referrals from the beginning of the year to the mid-year. But that growth accelerates then in the second semester. So we're expecting to see accelerated growth in the second semester on this program. I used just a different measure for you to see for math. So we have the RIT scores, and I know sometimes people's eyes start to glaze over when we start getting into the weeds of NWEA. But again, similar trends, well behind grade level when we first did our diagnostic testing with the students, and we've been doing a really good job of getting them caught back So in our next kind of steps, we have some pretty good ideas now around what are other steps we need to take to really improve the learning for our students. And so one of the things that we tracked was, I mentioned the referral data went down over the course of the year. And so one of the things we constantly tracked was time of day for referrals, the type of referral that was coming in, things like that. And so we had a lot of really good data, and what we found was that a lot of the referrals were rooted in trauma. And so we needed to do a better job of proactively addressing trauma in our students. And so we spent a lot of time researching best practices, actually hired IYI to help lead us in this process. And what we found, or what we created, was an implementation plan for a comprehensive counseling program. And so if our main goal is to have healthy, happy students who are on the pathway to college and career readiness, when you have an elementary school, one of the key responsibilities is to build the foundational skills that students are going to have. So those skills like problem solving, and being able to think creatively, be able to work with others. And so what we've settled on is having this continuum of services in which we implement research-based social-emotional learning curriculum in the elementary school for all of our students. That has been shown, the program that we choose, Second Steps, has shown to decrease student referrals while concurrently increasing student performance on state assessments. And so implementing that is kind of a tier one for all of our students. And then the tier two is utilizing some more of the mindfulness practices, and a program called Minds in Motion, which is geared towards developing stronger focus, lessening anxiety in students. It's a good tier-two response to intervention plan. And that came out of our research through the American Counseling Association and some of our work, looking at best practices across the country. And then the third part, kind of our tier three, is including more kind of parent workshops and things like that, showing parents better how to mirror some of the positive discipline and that sort of thing that we're utilizing at the school. And then we're pairing that with a plan for student-led conferences that really gear kids towards understanding who they are, what their strengths are, and then what sorts of jobs, careers, that they should be pursuing to utilize those strengths, and then the process by which they need to lay out a plan to get to their goals. These students, we only go up to sixth grade, so these students have a big choice in which middle school to attend. And so really working with our students to be selective in that process, and highly intuitive about what would be best for them. And then educating the parents as well on how to navigate that process. We will continue to use our data-driven practices to modify, to tweak our model, to make sure that we're addressing the needs of the students. You know, to the earlier question, I think our enrollment increase shows significant buy-in for our program. We've had a number of community partners who have come on and gotten very excited about working with us. My favorite anecdotal story, though, comes from our sixth-grade class. So this is our oldest class. This is the class who many of the students have been attending the school for their elementary careers. And they created a petition, an entire presentation for our administration team a couple weeks ago, and their petition was they wanted to stay for their seventh-grade year at our school. And the line that stuck with me was, when this student who was really shy and didn't like to speak at the beginning of the year was presenting, and he said, "This is the first school in which we feel loved." And so when you have that cultural shift, when the students, there's that old saying, "They don't care about what you know until they know that you care." And so to see that shift in the students, and to embrace that core belief that we have of leading with love and really building and focusing on relationships, we're really seeing kind of the needle shift. So obviously, academic gains are very important. We're a school, we understand that. But the cultural shift, I think, has been tremendous as well, and we're very proud of that as well. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. Kevin, Alicia, and Dr. LaGrande, thank you very much for your presentation.
Can I mention something to the deputy superintendent? I know this is a little off-topic, but I know your ongoing consideration of closing some high schools at IPS. And I guess just, I want to offer my encouragement for what you're trying to do. I know you've taken some heat for it. But I think it's critically important that you strive for efficiency, and, you know, I think the process you're going through and what ultimately I hope you achieve will be the ability to put more resources into the classroom, into things that are important, as opposed to wasting it on underutilized facilities. So I commend you for your efforts. I hope that you're successful. I know you're taking some heat for it. Nobody likes to see their school closed, but I think we have to think about the kids and not buildings. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your support. Have a great day. All right, next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And as listed in the agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor approve by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? All right, we have then two adjudications regarding state tuition support withholding for turnaround academies. The first is Indianapolis Public Schools, June 2017. This is an administrative proceeding conducted pursuant to Indiana Code 20-31-9.53 to determine the amount of state tuition to support, to be withheld from the state tuition support funds that would otherwise be distributed to Indianapolis Public Schools from July 1 through December 31, 2017. The reference number for this proceeding is 05-062017. Pursuant to the materials provided to the board, the Department of Education has recommended withholding the following state tuition funds for the operation of the turnaround academies in IPS. $1,502,584.98 for the operation of Emma Donovan Middle School. $1,939,857.95 for the operation of Thomas Carr Howe. And $2,570,420.55 for the operation of Emmerick Manuel. Is there a motion to adopt the department's recommendation to withhold the state tuition funds for IPS for the operation of the turnaround academies in the following amounts?
So moved.
Any discussion? Dr. Friedus?
I have a question. When we withhold this money, where does this six, seven million dollars go?
To the operator.
It goes to the operator. So that if we were to look at the operators, we should see the operator receiving seven million plus of, because that's the amount that's being withheld. Is that correct?
Yes, for these particular funding streams, through the state funding formula, as it's outlined in the memo, these funds through a contract with the department are directed to the operator, which is considered an LEA. This does not include the funding, as you can see clearly in the memo, this does not include any funding as it relates to local property taxes, which go to support transportation, facilities, those types of things, as outlined under law. And those are agreements between the organization and the district to work that out, and that's been codified in state law.
Who's the vendor for Howe Manual and Donovan?
The operator is the turnaround school operator, is Charter Schools USA, who was assigned by the board in 2011 and then extended a few years before.
So they are the operators for each of those three schools?
Yes, sir.
So they should be receiving this money in the neighborhood of six, seven million dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and it's distributed, not all in one block. It's distributed, like state tuition support, is distributed to all schools in the state, which is a monthly allocation. And also, I think there's some, what's the word, anticipated allotments there. So there's a December 1 sped count, as well as the September count date. So all of these numbers are based on anticipated enrollment, that is predicted by previous years. So there is opportunities for reconciliation if those numbers don't match specifically, but for the most part, this is the allocation. And that's, once again, how all schools across the state operate.
So this is the annual total, although it may vary by the formula that we apply. On an annual basis, we should see this amount or close to it based on the formula.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Dr. Miss?
Yes.
Dr. Friedus?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Dr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Second adjudication is regarding Gary Community School Corporation. This is an administrative proceeding conducted pursuant to Indiana Code 20-31-9.53 to determine the amount of state tuition support to be withheld from the state tuition support funds that would otherwise be distributed to Gary Community School Corporation from July 1 through December 31, 2017. The reference number for the proceeding is 04-062017. Pursuant to the materials provided to the board, the Indiana Department of Education has recommended withholding $2,511,578.93 in state tuition support for the operation of Theodore Roosevelt Career and Technical Academy in the Gary Community School Corporation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Dr. Friedus?
Yes.
Dr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Dr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Dr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Yes. All right, at this point, should we take a break? Ten-minute break before we start new business? Is that appropriate?